Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call meeting order. Do you have a forum?
I would like to move to approve the minutes from the January 9th, 2025 budget workshop, January 13th, 2025, and January 27th, 2025. Regular meetings, and I'll take them one at a time, or?
I'll do them all together.
One for all together.
I would like to move to approve the minutes from the January 9th, 2025 budget workshop to January 13th, 2025, and to January 27th, 2025, regular meetings.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, second by Mark. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting minutes, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 1B, additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Item 1C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items? I don't see any of them. Item 2, good evening, ladies, students, representative of court. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I can start. I have the All Grove and Seymour schools this month. So important dates and school announcements for All Grove is that February 3rd to 17th is kindergarten registration. February 5th is preschool open enrollment night. February 7th is mismatched socks night and spirit event. February 14th is the return of summer special dance along the rated PTO event. On February 28th is dressed in press day spirit event, and April 4th being literary integrity day, May 2nd tie-dye day. June 6th is summer vacation course day. And some academic highlights from All Grove is that for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day observance of students for biographies and discuss freedom and equality, and pre-K students engaged in shape identification counting learning activities. Grade 2 went to the science center, the Connecticut Science Center, and had hands-on learning about pollination and goals of insects ecosystem. Grade 1 did writing in science, and they wrote sensory-based poems, and they also became, they started their unit on sound principles. And kindergarten also started learning about responsibilities and leaderships and shared findings with their second graders. And they also started a new unit about featuring folktales, legends, and fairy tales, and they also started focusing on addition and subtraction. And grade 2 in math started doing inches, centimeters, meters, yards, and they also worked kindness, honesty, and friendships. And so special events in All Grove is that they had their birthday celebration, they had their celebration, they did their projects, we did balloons, we did our coins, stuff like that. And we also had the sweep of the fundraiser. So school raised donations, spread an entry, and it was based on a food drive, and they predicted either the Eagles or the Chiefs won the Super Bowl. I'm happy to say that the Eagles won in our drive and the Super Bowl. And outdoor indoor activities for recess is that due to outdoor weather, they went to inside recess in full cheerleading. And they also did snow activities and ice hockey-based games. And for technology and library updates, they had hour of code. So the first and kindergartners started participating in like Code Monkey to collect bananas and treasure, and second graders worked on robot code, CAP to navigate back mazes and portals. And the coding curriculum will run from January to March 25th. And they also started doing technology from grade 2. So students practice keyboard skills and were encouraged to practice at home for 10 to 15 minutes biologically. And All Grove teachers and administration are also here analyzing their reading and math data to assess the effectiveness of their academic programs to ensure they can find areas of support or improvement. So that's All Grove. And then of course Seymour, sorry. For Seymour, we have the Great Kindness Challenge. So Seymour elementary participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, and that's just celebrating a week of positivity and compassion. And teachers surprised this meeting with a flash mom dance, which I'm sure is really exciting. And we also have the Seymour Winter Concert. Fourth and fifth graders performed beautifully during the concert. And some academic highlights was that the grade 4 went on an art field trip, and they visited the last right avenue to learn about art. Fifth grade science started doing some interactions with their environment to understand ecosystems. Third grade started reading poetry and covering historical topics such as natural liberty and dangerous. Fourth grade science also conducted experiments on earth changes, so it's focusing on weather and erosion. Third grade science also started building vehicles to study force and motion. Some community events and important dates are that we had the Kids Heart Challenge fundraising ended on 31st, with the top donors able to earn a chance to still string mystery possible on field day. Read Across America is February 26th, and the students will participate in buddy-keeping activity at All Grove School, bearing with reading buddies for book, craft, and snacks. And there's also a technology and social media presentation on February 20th at 6:30. Students' achievements in Seymour has been sweet stacking champions, Mia and Jaden, fifth graders won multiple medals at the Springfield Open Sweet Stacking Tournament on January 11th. And they also did Martha Luther King Jr. observance, and they all get here on his legacy. Some important dates is that Seymour's Play Beyond the Mic is April 23rd, Seymour's Open House April 24th, elementary art show is December 15th. And fourth graders had an exciting time in PE because they started playing a game called Nine Square. This game encouraged teamwork, strategy, and a loss of laughter, keeping students active. And we also had third grade recess red light, green light fun. Despite snowy conditions, they played an energetic game. And professional development and curriculum updates is that this week during professional development, teachers are working on revising like the report cards, and the SUC Department of Education has adopted components of social, emotional, and intellectual habits. And teachers are analyzing how do these habits align with their current report cards and making sure that they can actively encourage that in their reports.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually was able to sit in one day last week. I was at Seymour School, and I was in the third grade class, and they were just starting the Connecticut History Unit. And I was so impressed at what A students already knew about Connecticut history, and it's amazing what you can learn sitting in the third grade classroom as well. So thank you for that report, Pershing.
I am going to be continuing on the second part of the report, and I'm going to be reporting on East Trinity Middle School and East Trinity High School. So the way I did it was I did January, February events, and I also broke it down by after that with the extracurriculars for school. So something interesting that happened in basic social studies was Mr. Thomas' class celebrating International Lego Day, and they built scenes related to ancient India. Continuing with that on social studies, in seventh grade social studies, they worked on creative projects using candy and crafts to demonstrate different types of government, and specifically ones in East Asia. In grade 8 language arts, they did these identity self-portraits, and I remember doing these when I was in middle school. They're really fun. Basically, she gets a silhouette, you have to stand against a wall to draw your shadow, and you fill that shadow up with everything that makes you like your identity, like your culture, your heritage, what like your hobbies, your friends. So I enjoyed seeing that they were doing that. And in grade 8 health, they were doing a hands-on simulation where they were simulating sobriety test to look at substance misuse, and they were also learning about insomnia and diabetes. In grade 7 science, in Mrs. Cece's class, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right.
Chicorelli, Ms. Chek.
I said Cece.
Yeah.
Students were participating in an activity called Scoop, and basically they selected a word which represented what they wanted to do in their year. For example, perseverance, like they wanted to be more resilient, they wanted to get through more activities, or like happy, like maintain a better mood. Has anyone stuck with the New Year's resolution so far? That's good. I have not. In basic science, in Mr. George's class, they were doing a lot of chemical experiments, and they were doing different ones with baking soda, I saw volcano, I saw something with tomato sauce, I don't know what that one was. In grade 8 art, they were doing ceramic leaves. I'm not sure if any of you have like middle schoolers, but they bring home like a ceramic leaf pot, and you spend like a month working on it. And the first day I brought mine, I broke it. But something that. And then for extracurriculars that happened, I made sure to get the date on this one right. At the EGMS Winter Concert, which was on January 15th, 2025, it was led by Ms. Chulu and Mrs. Gilbert. And there were clearly many people there to listen, which is great. This is something new. We didn't have it when I was in middle school, but they had an EGMS after-school dance, and over 160 students attended. There was music, food, fun activities, they had a photo booth, and cotton candy. And also, there's a new club at the middle school, it's called the Infanto Club. It focuses on engineering, and what they're currently working on is building like an electric scooter. And some things that are coming up, this is an activity that relates both to the middle school and high school, is the Rock of Ages musical, which is supposed to be in late March of 2025. And on February 2nd, 2025, they did a PTO fundraiser, which is featuring tickets to the Yukon Women's Basketball Game to support the EGMS PTO. And along with that, they also are going to do another PTO fundraiser on March 25th, 2025, at the Cracker Barrel Club. And the event encourages donations of feminine products to the, forgot the French term, thank you. And that's all I have for the middle school. So for the high school, I also have academics and extracurriculars, but I did it a little bit differently. So something important to note about high school academics is that we just finished, well, not just, but for me, it feels like just. We finished midterms from January 21st to 24th, and now we're starting second semester, and we're beginning third quarter. So I just went off some personal highlights for me, and I think one of them so far is reading The Great Gatsby in AP Lang. I'm sure anyone in AP class knows that you do a lot of exam prep right now, you're doing a lot of essay writing, a lot of practice tests. So I really enjoy this book so far. There's a lot of drama. Have any, I'm sure all of you probably have read The Great Gatsby in high school. It's an American classic. Another one was a gummy bear anatomy lab. I'm a TA, which is like a teacher assistant for anatomy, and I helped set this up, but it was like you learn different anatomical positions than different like vocab, and get a cup and like gummy bears. It's one of my favorite labs because you get to eat a lot of gummy bears. And something that we're doing in Spanish class right now is we're doing presentations about different UST days and UST commands, and we're learning like a review of that. And then for extracurriculars that are happening at the high school, the snowball occurred on January 25th, and you can find photos of that on social media. This is coming up. The Valentine's Day fundraisers were selling crumble cookies and carnations. Additionally, from February 13th to February 21st is going to be the Class of 2026 Spirit And Tuesday, February 11th, is PePops' concert, but it might snow, so February 13th is the snow date.
It's not gonna snow.
Not this Tuesday, not tomorrow.
I sort of want a snow day. Two snow days is about. But the theme is 90s and 2000s. And I said this before, but the Rock of Ages play is happening in late March. Sports are coming to an end, inter-track and basketball. I know for Abby, inter-track ended, but I know for some of the participants, it hasn't yet. And this is for literary magazine. We're almost ready to print our latest edition, and I'm on there, so I'm really happy about that. And that's what I have for the East Trinity Middle and High School. And thank you for listening to our report.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, you know, you guys sit here, we spend a lot of time on budget and policy and some boring things. It's terrific, you know, you informative reports of what's really going on behind the scenes and in school. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your time on putting it all together.
You should get research credit for doing all that work. You go home and find out. Thank you. Okay, item 3, chairperson's report. I shared with the Board of Education members, you have copies of the 2025 committees for us, and you also received a copy of a letter that Missy received, and I received a copy of it from our first select woman to share with the board of that, and Missy shared with you the letter from a resident and her response to the resident, so that we've all seen that. And that ends my report. Item 4, superintendent's report. Missy?
I am going to begin with our bus update. I'm going to summarize, there's a lot of data on this chart. I did ask our bus company for, we have seven days since some of our revisions have been made. So went through from first stop, child pickup, to our last stop at the second school. Our times to school, wait, let me back up for a second. All of our times at home are good. Our times to our first stop, which is Seymour School, are around the 45-minute mark or less. Where we are running into a little bit of a trickiness is the time from Seymour School, drop-off, and then over to All Grove School. As long as I can remember, this has been what we have done, but just because this is always what we have done doesn't mean this is what we need to continue doing. That is what brings us over, because it could be anywhere between 8 to sometimes 16, 17 minutes from drop-off at Seymour over to All Grove School. So I am talking with the bus company. One of our board members had one suggestion that I brought to Emma J. We have a couple other ideas. The bus company has an idea. Because as long as we're going to go between two schools, stopping at Seymour, then coming to All Grove, we are going to be over the 45 minutes. Because if not, if you think about it, then you're looking at getting to Seymour in about 25, you know, 30 minutes. And in order to do that, we're going to need additional buses, and I'm not sure that's the best solution. So we would like to try and kind of move away from what we've done for many years by dropping off Seymour and then moving to All Grove. I don't know what that looks like yet. It's going to take a bunch of dry runs and some working with our principals in terms of how we can make that work. But I think there's a, I'm going to hope there's a better solution than what we're doing.
So you're saying that was that thing where they were talking about some buses go to one, some go to the other?
Well, that was one of the ideas.
That would happen like this year?
No, no. No, no, no. I am not changing bus routes.
Oh, okay.
This year, unless I'm directed to do so. It would be something for the summer to look and start for next year. So that was, so Ms. Cormier, that was one of the suggestions to look at, if there were dedicated buses to Seymour, dedicated buses to All Grove, or if we can just drop off alternating between Seymour and All Grove, depending on where the, what's closest to the last stop. That makes the most sense to me. I've got to work a little bit of logistics around that, because if you think about it, I can't have buses at two schools at the same time for dismissal. So I have to think about that as well. But I don't, I think we can come up with something. It's, you know, we're spending 15-plus minutes in between buildings, which is bringing us over the desired timeframe for the student runs. Our bus rides home, you can see they're all, in the blue is the bus number with the AM or PM runs. You know, we are, and that's to the last stop, that's going to both schools for pickup and to the last stop. So we are, you know, well within that 45-minute timeframe.
And on the way home, that also includes like the clock is started when the kids get on at Seymour?
Correct. Correct. I guess they're quicker to get off the bus than they are to come on to get to school.
Are your plans for September? That's based on us having another bus, because I know that's our budgetary item.
Well, we did budget, sure, another bus. Of course, there's some other elements we need to think about with some new builds coming in, but we will look at the current number of buses as is, seven buses as is, and then with depending on the new, the new builds, which would probably going to put us over to a seventh bus anyway.
Because yeah, before COVID, when there wasn't all these shortages, the, there wasn't, there wasn't, when there were seven buses running full-time every day, this wasn't an issue.
I mean, our timeframe to Seymour, I'm just not sure if it's most cost-efficient to get another bus instead of looking at the way we're doing our bus drop-off, because that 15 minutes is making the difference.
Right, but we always knew it was that long, though. I know it was reported to us, if you go back at the beginning of the year, there was a meeting where the bus company was reporting it was less than 10 minutes, and there were parents saying, that is not the case. I mean, if you leave Seymour, you get stuck behind a bus, it's like 15-plus minutes with that light. So I think, I don't know, I just think we knew a lot of this, and I think we need to think about if we're going to have even more kids next year possibly with the development. I don't, even switching, I mean, that's, yeah, people look into it, it works great, but I just, I expressed these concerns last year when the idea of cutting a bus came up. So I was told we consider all options, because I think this has been concerns going on for more, for a few years now, and it's now halfway through the year, and we're still dealing with it. So I just feel bad for the kids that have to sit on the bus now, or parents can't, because then there's the other concern of the parents who pick up. If we didn't have so many parents picking up, I mean, if any parent, if you're a parent and you go to pick up, the line is huge. It's, I've never seen it so long to pick up kids. So I just think if more of these kids are on the bus, these times would be even higher. And it's like you can almost see some of them, which days more kids are getting picked up versus taking the bus. So I just think you have to look at everything.
Yes.
I just hope next year we have some type of solution for it.
Are we still looking at possibility of adjusting starting times at the two elementary schools to fit the bus schedule?
Yes, or leaving the starting times the way they are, but having the buses drop off at the different schools. Because our timeframe's only, it's only a five-minute staggered start, so that's not going to make a huge difference one way or another. So I was talking to both elementary principals to see if there's a better way that we can, you know, accommodate, you know, different, a different time drop-off at, you know, so it'd be earlier at All Grove and maybe some later at Seymour.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Does that do any report, Ms.?
That is the only report I have.
Thank you. Item 5, committee reports. From the Policy Committee.
Yeah, we have a meeting that I just scheduled today for next Thursday at 5:00. Can we use the Board of Education offices?
Of course.
So I haven't heard from everybody, but hopefully this thing's true. Amanda, hopefully everybody, Lisa, are you still doing policy?
I am still on policy. I didn't get an email about that, but that's Thursday the 20th?
Thursday the 20th at 5:00, or about offices.
And Lynn, if you see from the list, I added Drew to the Policy Committee.
Yes, yes, we're thrilled to have you, Drew.
Okay. Nothing new on the budget tonight. We'll be waiting, Board of Finance, our next meeting, after looking at our proposal, will give us a number that we pull out of the sky somewhere and we'll work with that.
Yeah, Board of Finance is next, it's the 19th, so if any board members would like to come and support the presentation, that would be wonderful.
Seven?
Seven, correct. No, town hall.
Okay, facilities. Ricky's not here. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add from facilities?
Good for you.
Okay. And I don't have anything, except I did tell Mark I did get an email today from C-Tech Solar about a proposal for solar cells at the middle high school, and I'll arrange for a meeting with the Facilities Committee.
Yeah, and we're actually looking to schedule another meeting too, within the next like two weeks or so.
Negotiations, Mark? Nothing new right now?
Nothing new, other than I think I'm trying to get something on the calendar in the next few weeks to meet, because we haven't gotten together, but there's some things that we probably want to at least make sure that we have our ducks in a row. As I think in the fall, we'll start with some new negotiations and stuff.
Two.
Yeah.
Item 6, recommended actions.
I do have a Curriculum Committee report. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped by curriculum?
I think so. Maybe I was on my calendar adding the Policy Committee when you. So we have not had a meeting yet as we hadn't established this, and I am going to send out an email. We were looking at doing the third Thursday again, and I'll send an email out to committee members checking on time so that we can coordinate that. Mrs. Light sent me a summary of what has been going on in her area of curriculum, and the Connecticut Department of Education released the 2024 Connecticut K-12 World Language Standards, which were approved by the Connecticut State Board of Education on January 15th. These standards are organized by five goal areas, communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. Performance descriptors and sample indicators are included to guide administrators and teachers in the development of curriculum and assessment of learner's progress towards efficiency. Over the next several months, the Connecticut Department of Ed and the Connecticut Council for Language Teachers will be providing professional learning for these new world language standards, and our world language department will begin processing, the process of aligning our current curriculum to the updated standards. Also, administrators are together reading The Anxious Generation: How the Great Rewiring of Childhood Is Causing an Epidemic of Mental Illness by Jonathan Haidt. Groups of educators are also forming book clubs to discuss how cell phones and other electronic devices are contributing to mental health issues in today's youth. Professional development has recently focused on mathematics instruction, ELA instruction, providing multi-tiered systems of support for students who are struggling academically, emotionally. AI for teachers, and dozens of other approved personal plans related to student achievement goals. And finally, the capstones for the class of 2025 will begin presentations in March. Board members will receive a schedule later this month if they would like to attend.
Thank you, Lisa, and sorry for missing it, and I also failed to call for Communications Report.
Great, so now we have a new committee. We'll have to chat and see what our goals will be. We didn't meet much last year at all, so trying to revamp some things. I'll set something up for there. I'll email, see if there's days and times that work.
Okay. Thank you, that covers all of them. Now I'll get to item 6, recommended actions to approve. Can I get a motion to approve the January 2025 financials so we could discuss them?
Check here.
Okay, Lisa with the motion to approve.
I'll second.
And Lynn with the second. Okay. Mary, it's all yours.
We have the financials, and a few items to note that are in the financials. Object 112, which is the non-certified personnel, it's trending slightly over due to two additional hires that were not budgeted for in prior year. Object 330, which is professional services, this one trends over pretty much every year due to the student support service student requirements provided by our contracted vendors, but we do offset some of this, of the increase from billings for tuition, for tuition students receiving services, so we will offset with that. Object, as last month, object 561 and 563, the public school and private school tuition is trending over due to mid-year placements in magnet schools for the public and a new placement in the private school tuition.
I just want to clarify the two new hires, the non-cert, these are paraprofessionals. Last year, we employed more paraprofessionals from CREC, so we're down with our CREC paraprofessionals and hired these primary paraprofessionals. But it's two different lines in the budget, which is why one's looking a little bit more than the other.
And so the paraprofessionals that we just hired, I'm going to guess, were less expensive? Yes.
CREC doesn't do us many favors. They do us favors, but not for cost. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the motion to approve the twenty twenty five financials?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did it too fast.
I was gonna ask who's opposed first. All those in in favor of accepting it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you.
Sandy, you were rolling for a second out of the corner of my eye.
Item six, a pre-public act thirteen sixty nine educational services. Uh, this is requested and we provide it to the Board of Finance each year. Mary?
Any more comments?
Oh, oh, yeah, I didn't get the motion. How about a motion for the? Hey, Lisa with the motion to approve. And they have it with a second. Now, now we can go on.
Okay, so this is a report that we do each year to the Board of Finance. Uh, this year, um, being new, relatively new, I asked Jeff.
You can't use that new thing anymore.
I can, I can. I'm new to this stuff, but this is for, I asked him what he actually uses this report for and what they do and sent him a little memo saying that, um, for those of you, as you know, this is a, an act by the um, a public act by Connecticut that mandates each local board of education to prepare an itemized estimate of the cost of maintenance of public schools for the ensuing year and shall submit that estimate to the Board of Finance in each town or city. I did a little bit of analysis with a bunch of other districts, not too many of them do that, but in looking at the way we did it, there's a lot of things in there that didn't make sense, so I spoke to Jeff, revamped it, and pretty much I I gave you what we have, which is, which is our maintenance, an estimate, itemized estimate cost of maintenance. So Jeff approved it, um, or, you know, told it wasn't the board, just to make sure he was okay with the way I was doing it, that was different than in prior years. And so this is pretty much just maintenance for all of our schools, broken out by school, Al Grove, Seymour, and then the middle high school, we keep together because we don't break it out between being one school, we don't break it out. So that's what this report, um, if approved, will go to the Board of Finance for their meeting next on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I like your modifications.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the P A. thirteen sixty nine educational services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried, thank you much. Item seven, agenda items for future meetings. We have student activities, we have that as a policy once a year to get a report on that. Anyone have anything else they want to add for future meetings? Okay, saying none. Item eight, comments from visitors, welcome.
Hello.
Would you like to make a comment? Yes.
Hello, Sandy Lindelina from the Friendfriend Food Pantry, and I apologize for my voice. Um, I'm just here for a collective thank you for the way the public schools participate in our community. Each school, there's a food drive each year. The um Seymour just did Valentine Day cards for all our participants, which are already little bags to go out on Friday. And um we have N H S. volunteers, we have community service volunteers that work at both the pantry and the thrift shop. And Superintendent Favaro and her admin team donated um celebration kits. There's pans with cake mix and frosting, candles and sprinkles for all our families at the pantry, which is really appreciated. So just a thank you for the involvement and we appreciate it and um we look forward to keeping it going.
Well, thank you. We're glad we could help and we certainly appreciate everything you do as well.
Thanks.
Nice to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, item nine, if I could get a motion to go into executive session for Superintendent's midyear evaluation. Motion by Mark, second, second by win.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess that's seven thirty four, we'll go into executive session and.